Let the committee meeting order, please. Thank you. This is Selectman Board Meeting in New Hampshire. Welcome, everybody, to this chilly night. I am going to, I have requested Selectman Bugbee to take over the chair tonight because I'm having some eye issues with being able to respond. So with that, I'll turn it over to Selectman Bugbee.
Hello. Andy Robinson wants to say a couple of words first?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I know there had been some communication one-on-one earlier, but I wanted to see if the board had any interest in developing a mask policy for their meetings. I did talk with the Municipal Association Council today, that is an option. What they suggested to me was the board could choose a building or buildings that they wish to mask mandate, or they could choose a section of a building where public meetings were held if that was the board's pleasure. And I did tell at least one board member that I would bring that up this evening, so I am bringing it up. And I have the RSA handle language you could use to proceed with that.
Can I add something? I just think it's important that we're aware that our hospitals right now are struggling, that there are people that are not getting services that they need. But we've all been around with a lot of extra people through the holidays, it doesn't have to be for very long. But I do think it'd be really helpful if we could all mask, and some of the people that are from the town are, and then, but actually a lot of people from the town to feel safe coming to our Selectman's meeting.
What's the scope? What scope do we have on this?
The scope can be, as I understand it, as large or as narrow as you want it to be. You could say all public buildings in town, which some municipalities, mostly larger, Manchester, Nashua, Lebanon, Hanover, a couple other places, have basically instituted public buildings in town who need to wear a mask. When I talked to, it was Nash, the Municipal Association today, he told me that you could pick a building, he said you could pick a portion of a building where you hold public meetings to have a mask mandate. So the board has a complete authority to do that. If you decide to go, you know, remote access on your meetings, he suggested that you have some ability for people who, because of prescriptions or disabilities can't wear a mask, be allowed to remotely comment at your meetings and post your needs as such.
So in terms of scope, though, is that just town buildings?
You can make it just this meeting.
My understanding would be it's town buildings.
As big or small as you need to make it.
Okay, so this is not like Market Basket or something like that?
No.
You could.
I think you could, if you wanted to, but my question to the attorney directly was public buildings in town, and his only caution was you have to let the library trustees determine their own policy?
And I think they require them.
They are required masks.
So I think it would be prudent, I don't know, Mr. Brown, do you have any comments?
I would say the public, the public meetings in one of our, one of the town facilities, we should probably ask for masks to be required. It's a very, it's really very difficult. You go into some stores or some other facilities and there's no mask required as long as you've had the booster shot, or there's no mask required, period, or there's a mask required. So, but I think it makes, it makes sense for the town facilities where we have public meetings that we say a mask is required.
What I would suggest is using the authority given this board under RSA 147:1, RSA 47: 17, Section 15, and RSA 41:11A, that you include the requirement that those who attend public meetings at public facilities be required to wear a mask covering their nose and mouth.
So move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Mr. Brown, do you have a favor?
Yes.
Good trend?
Yes.
Mr. Bugbee says yes. Motion passes? So...
We are...
Mask up.
We are now in a mask-required meeting.
Do you make everyone? A mask?
Yeah.
You just voted yourself a mask on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I didn't mention, and I don't know what the board's thoughts on this are, there was a combination of length of mandates that I saw. The larger cities used January 31st. Some of the smaller towns said that they would revisit the policy at each meeting to consider rescinding or not. That's certainly an option, whether it was included in the motion or not.
Oh, it wasn't included, so it's ineffective until we remove it, so...
It's ineffective until you remove it.
I would say every meeting we can just, you know, because right now we're red, maybe when it goes to moderate, maybe we can consider it.
Our hospitals have to go red.
And the other thing I would ask, if I could, if our health officer and/or fire chief could, and/or police chief, could tell us in terms of when they see different things happening? So maybe if you could communicate that with the town administrator, when the next meeting comes off, he can give us your input, because that's valuable as well.
And I can certainly say in touch with Code Enforcement Officer Rossi.
Okay. Fair enough. Next element is, our next item is public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the voting, state your name and address, we'll leave your comments for three minutes, address your comments to the board. Anybody interested? No? Okay. Item number three, the first budget public hearing. So I declare the public hearing open. And Andy, you're going to walk us through?
That's what we're doing.
So let's review it, and then we'll do the warrants, and then we'll review the school default and top line.
I do now, I don't need that, thank you. That's going to be how I sit in today.
Maybe that is my budget.
We won't want that.
I'm stuck.
Thank you. Sorry. I don't even know what's attached. Thank you back there for inviting that place.
Okay. I don't know if folks have a copy of the budget with them, I assume the board does?
Yep.
And I can, I can just go through by sections. The Selectman's Office budget being the first portion of this budget. And what was approved in fiscal year 2022 was 147,994. The request moving forward from both the department has and recommended by the Advisory Budget Committee is $163,095.
Do we want to, I don't know, what the other board members want to, do you want to have him go through everything? Do you want to do it section by section in terms of if you have issues or questions or...
I'm just trying to think what the best way is, because there's people that are waiting, start to talk about their area, want to make sure we cover it, and then want to get back to it.
Are these, I take it these are all the same even though they're four?
They should, yes.
I'm trying to think of everything.
Because it's higher.
I will point to you. She started saying that's not going to work. I mean, by law, in some places.
Can I, can I just say something first?
Yes.
One of the things that I do for the ABC is I go through, we put in what their ABC recommendation is, and I go through and do some estimates in terms of the county tax, the school tax, state education. Also, we get the numbers for the town evaluation. And just with what the ABC presented, and I don't, the other thing that's in here is there's no of those salary changes that we made. So just based on what's in there and all those particular changes and my estimates, we're looking at almost a 7% increase in the tax rate.
Correct.
I am extremely uncomfortable with that. So we're looking to raise this particular year about $1.2 million more than last year, and that's significant. So just like as in previous years, I'm going to be the chopper.
Do we know that, we don't know yet the change in the school district, right?
No, because I've used 3%. I'm not sure exactly what he's using, but...
Is that 3% in the 7%?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I'm using 2% for the county tax, I'm using 3% for the school tax, state education tax, 3%.
So the change that we have in town, then, is 2%?
Change that we have in town is about $1.46, which is about a 24.31% increase over last year's.
From the town?
Town portion.
Correct.
So we cannot lay this particular increase on the school board at the moment. We can, it's within our hands. So with that said, either we're going to have to have an extremely large tax increase or we're going to have to cut something. Or find some revenue that isn't, I've been addressed in many years. I don't think lottery ticket would do it either, but, you know, but that's where I And we can start cutting services, you can start cutting people, but I think it's going to have to be a combination because there's no way out of this particular issue, unless you're happy with a 7% tax increase.
No one's happy with a 7% tax increase. So I went through a lot of this over the weekend. It's very hard because each person that's brought this forward had very legitimate reasons for every single thing on here.
Yep.
Not a single thing that was, well, or silly or extravagant. So I think this is going to be challenging.
Definitely. And remember, we've got multiple of these, so it's not like you have to do everything tonight.
Right.
So we can look at possibly low-hanging fruit, but I think there's going to be some hard decisions. So in terms of moving forward, you want to do it section by section? You want to go through the whole thing and then look at particular things? Either way works.
Section by section makes sense to me.
Oh, good, because I was just going to say, since nobody's talking, people decide.
I was giving this to Ryan, Dan.
All right. So let's go section by section. So in terms of Selectman's Office, is there anything in there?
Your increases there are, for the most part, projected salary increases.
Yep. The third line down, temporary employee wages.
Do we have a used-to temporary employee, for two years now?
I don't know, that's my question.
We used one this year, it looks like. Oh, no, requested.
You haven't, doesn't look like there's been any appropriation out of that line in the last two years.
So, just to start things off, I would like to remove that.
Great. What?
Anything else in there?
Supplies, have those moved over, a lot of that has moved over to the highway department, is that why that's down 500?
I'm not sure. Andy, do you?
Sorry.
I believe we just, it had not been expended previously, so when we did the town administrator's budget, cut that in half.
Do you want to leave it?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Anything else? Mr. Brown, anything in there?
No.
All right, okay. Move to the next one. Elections and registrations?
I know one of the biggest increases was meals because of COVID, they couldn't have shorter sports-type meals. Are there any other options for that large increase that we could offer? Any other ways to make sure everyone's fed well and safely?
The ER catering trailer.
Make individual meals, I mean, livestock. It's just, we're, you know, the actual was close to the summer.
Yep.
Because we had to do it that way, but the year before, we didn't do it this way.
Also, is the number of elections you're going to have? So in this budget, you're going to have, you're going to have midterms in November, you're going to have the January deliberative session, the January, actually, the March election. I don't think there's anything in, you have primaries too, but that's this year. So you're going to have one, two, three events. So do we spend $500 each time we have an event? I don't know how much we spend.
Two years ago, you spent $287 total.
And I don't think that was, I think that was fluke.
Could we just, could we put in a thousand and just try to be a little more careful about how we're making sure we have food, and make sure we think a little bit more about how to get, hopefully, a couple of ones?
All right, so let's reduce that to a thousand.
I need to cook these at home.
Well, a local businessman has offered his trailer, so we'll have to see.
Fabulous.
The printing of the ballots?
Can you make that less? No.
Well, I don't know, in terms of, it's 4,000.
We had spent so much because of mail-in, which we'll need to continue to do, right?
In talking to the town clerk when we did this, she did not think that rate was going down.
Right.
Bringing costs that are significant.
All right. Anything else in that section?
No.
This is a public hearing, so, and we're going through these, if anybody has any questions, concerns, or please...
Let us know.
Throw something at me, get my attention. Town clerk, tax collector?
Right, and you're at $111,149 as a request this year. Previous year's approved budget was $98,907.
The assistant wages part-time?
Yeah, that was added into this, and that is the split halfway between town clerk and finance.
Okay.
It wasn't in this budget line previously. Like, that's a good chunk of that.
All right. And then overtime is up too.
Salary is just something we can't fight this year.
Just looking at that, I don't believe that actually is the present town clerk assistant.
So what is that for them?
This is actually added, I do know what this is for. This is an added amount for anticipation of the retirement of the town clerk, and this is to cover some overlap.
Which is actually the following year, right?
Right.
So we could dig it up?
No.
No, it would be in this year. She's, the town clerk is planning on retiring, but in doing some planning for this, we're assuming that there's going to be some training needed, we know there's going to be some training needed, that she's going to need to stay on. There'll be a new town clerk, there will presumably be an assistant or deputy town clerk, as there always has been, and this would cover the training in the interim. And presumably be the town clerk, that we would pay that additional amount to stay on and do some training.
What about office supply? Is there anything we can do? Decrease the office supply? Stop printing everything?
Stop printing?
Anything else we can do?
You could probably take a little off of it, but it seems pretty cost-effective.
Yeah, with what you use, lots of time, so, all right.
Anything else in that section?
Dog tags appear to be staying about the same price.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Financial administration? Anything in there?
The only thing that I would offer in reviewing this, since I had prepared the administration budget, I've spoken to our computer and IT folks, and their recommendation for computer hardware replacement is substantially more than I included in the budget. My initial thought was that we would need to replace one server. We were behind schedule on the server for the town offices. In that time, Steve has actually come back to me and said that the police department server is in far more dire need than the town office server. He'd like to replace both of them, but we're looking probably at about $7,500 a server.
Didn't he mention that that would be something you could come up with funding from the budget?
Yeah, I could comfortably come up with at least half of it, I did some checking.
Okay. That's a, is your thing?
His thought was that we would order the servers in March with the idea that we could install them sometime after July, and he also wasn't sure of the timeframe for getting them, so that plan worked with his recommendation. I don't believe we have enough left at present in the computer hardware line to do a server. We could certainly, if we have further difficulty with desktop units, that sort of thing. And Steve has also been creative with us in regard to loaning us computers to use, finding secondhand computers, that sort of thing for desktops and laptops.
Can't do that forever.
Chief, is your funding this year or next year? This year?
Yeah. We weigh to close it to the end of the fiscal year, I could probably, I could feel more comfortable with possibly just replacing ours ourselves.
Okay. So you could come up with half of it, though?
Comfortably half of it, I can say that now, possibly the whole thing, but I wouldn't know that more until May.
And maybe we have less spending somewhere else we could use that, we had to, but we have a piece of cover. So that right now is under what, what is that under?
That's computer hardware, new equipment, it's the 750 line.
Oh.
The next section, so.
Got it, that's why I was finding it, perfect.
So if the police chief can potentially handle the police department server, then we may well be fine with the 10,000.
So in terms of financial administration, though, is there anything in there? For the two of you? No?
I mean, I didn't, I didn't see anything.
Okay. So IT expenses?
Actually, do we think that we're going to be doing conferences and travel for $1,500 next year when it's possible?
Possible.
But we spent $365, the, everything was normal, so, we made that less?
Well, define normal.
Which, this year was 2020?
Well, now it's 20...
2020, this is 2022, right?
Well, budget year as opposed to year.
Right. I'm saying which year was this, this, this was from 2019, this first one, is that correct?
Right, and I believe nobody has attended the major state conference over the past two years.
Great. And I do go to more conferences than we used to, and I get that, I also don't charge for mileage, I think, so, and I'm happy to, you know, whatever, but yes.
All right, so how about if we, like, start that one? And we can come back to it?
Great.
Because I think this first pass is not going to glean us too too much, but I'd love to see. All right, anything in computer expenses?
I don't see anything.
The reason that computer services was raised was we had an indication that First Light was going to increase in cost. They handle primarily our alarm system, and I believe we also have some voice-over-internet protocol with First Light, it's not with Comcast.
Okay.
So the alarms going up and the computer services?
Okay, so, and I am in the process of trying to see if we can lower some services on the communications line, which if we can do that, there may be some savings, I don't expect it to be overwhelming, but...
Okay.
Might be $1,000 a year.
Well, I have a little bit of a catch.
All right. Anything else in that section?
Scott, question?
Oh.
And, and...
Eric, yes?
Why is there such junk in the telephone service?
Cell phones, because we're, is that where we're buying them all together?
Yes.
Landlines, went from, landlines is four times as much, or three times as much money?
Good catch.
Oh, that's the town hall, right?
We're paying $4,000 for town halls?
Because they're voice-over IP phones.
Is that installation, or what is, what is the...
That's the ongoing maintenance charge, I believe.
Yeah, I believe that we had been given notice that we were going to see a fairly steep rate increase with regard to that. I don't have the exact backup for it, but can certainly get that.
Yeah, let me try.
And that's a new thing in the town offices? We didn't have that before, we just had regular lines, but in the daily building, all those phones are voice-over IP phones.
Doesn't voice-over IP beat less money?
Well, there's more phones, probably.
Can't you just give everybody two cell phones? And then make it $2,000 less? I mean, it really is a lot of, I don't understand $6,500 for phones.
Well, how about if we do this? Andy can check into it?
Yeah.
Most of the cell phones, too, so...
I'm going to make sure I don't have the... They're going for that now?
This is why it's so nice to have everyone here. We're not going to catch everything.
I have trouble reading upside down.
Okay, well, he's looking for that.
Right.
Assessing, anything in assessing?
Assessing.
No?
No.
Legal fees? I would propose that reduce that $17,500 to $15,000.
To how much? $15,000?
$15,000. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
I don't have the phone break.
Okay, so if you can, like, for the next time?
I certainly can.
Bring us details on that? All right. Public administration?
Public admin, I have personalized. You have what?
Personal mis, what did I say?
Public administration.
Oh, sorry, personal administration. Let's go to personal administration.
There we go, let's do this. Where the rest of us are.
All right.
All right, so, health insurance, there's nothing we can do about that, correct?
And these are all the updated numbers, right, Andy?
Yes, they are.
That's where we'd love to change them, but we can't. And retirement numbers, those are already fixed, correct? Those are another detail.
Yeah, that's...
So nothing to fix there, so what is fixable here?
So, under food and meetings, I'd like to reduce that a little bit, maybe to $750. And special awards and flowers, basically that's the volunteer appreciation dinner, so I'd like to cut that to like 500 bucks. And I'd like to cut food and meetings to like $500.
Is there anyone that disagrees, or is there anything we're forgetting, anything we're thinking of?
Well, once again, this is the first pass, so if somebody has an issue with it...
So we're thinking next December we're not going to have a appreciation?
Yep, that's what I'm thinking, because I'm in cutting mode. Because all the frills are coming off the dress, and you're going to get just the regular smock, so, sorry, that was a fashion analogy.
It's phenomenal, interesting.
Anything else in personal administration? No. Planning and zoning. This does include, Stratford Crans, County Regional Plannings in there too, so just be aware of that. But anything else?
One of the things we may be able to do here is remove the cellphone reimbursement, because the planning and zoning director is supposed to receive one of the new cell phones when we receive it.
Okay.
Which is supposed to be next week.
I'm not confident, just asking my group.
The other thing that looks amiss here is the software line. I believe we had decided to exclude about $11,000 from that, that looks like this got put back in as sure as the same.
Should be only be $1,500.
Yeah.
Did she upload my numbers? Because I'm seeing too many discrepancies here in terms of what the ABC recommended.
Yeah, and I have the ABC budget.
Because that's not good. See, the ABC did not recommend $25,000 in legal expenses, and there's been a few ones that we've gone through already that are different from what the ABC recommended. So I'm not happy about that.
You're not happy about what?
Well, that's just the nature of being the finance guy, when the numbers look really bad, I'm not happy.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, Scott, it does not look like she changed these, because I've got the, I've got the ABC budget, and the recommendation for legal was $10,000.
Yep.
So, software recommendation was $1,500.
Yep. So I would say that needs to be done. So I guess let us continue, because we've got... So I guess let us continue, because we've got more than that.
Question?
Go ahead, Eric.
The Stratford Regional Planning Commissioner, there was some question as to whether or not that was worth us spending the money on it. What does that buy us, the $5,000?
There's differing opinions. There's differing opinions. Karen is against it, she doesn't think we get our money's worth. Katrina, not to put words in your mouth, thinks finds value in it. I'm on the fence, I'm not sure what Mr. Brown says. But there's benefits to it, but in terms of Karen's opinion, we don't get our money's worth. But the thing is, one of the things that Katrina brought up in terms of getting access to different grants and their assistance in doing things, so. Andy?
He is on the agenda this evening.
Do we get $5,000 with the grants out of them?
It's not a dollar per dollar that you're going to see exactly the dollars of grants. What you are going to see is actually a lot more than $5,000 for the grants, because we have access to all the staff and employees there that can work towards getting us grants. We're then back on the math as far as when they're making plans, there's somebody in the room making the plans. And then we have access to so much more, so just by knowing it's helping, but then on top of that, having access. Plus, with this particular one, we are getting, we could be, if we did it this year, we'd be getting more than that amount of money in copying and things like that. So there's a lot of ways that we're just leaving money on the table by not having this. We would also, as of next year, be the only town in all of Stratford County that's not participating this year, because three of them are, have it on their budget for next year, but before they were.
Andy?
I will wait until it comes up as an agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So anything else in planning and zoning? Nope. Building? The thing I have in here is a couple of things. First one is under electricity for the Old Town Hall. The numbers we just got, even with the increased usage by the library, it was only like $80.
Right.
So 80 times 12 is not 1,800, can we cut that? It's like 80 times 12 is 960.
You think if it was 100, it'd only be 1,200?
Yeah.
Well, no, it'd be 800. Yeah.
Could you please repeat what you?
This is electricity for the Old Town Hall.
Yeah, because when the library wasn't using it, it was about $40. And then now when they're using it for their programs, it's up to about $80. So we talked about that whole thing, so we know how much electricity usually gives. So the $80 a month times 12 is $960, and it's budgeted 1,800. So I'm looking to see if we can reduce that.
Yeah, I think you can certainly reduce that. The other thing that needs to be corrected on here is the daily building rent has gone, it was at 60,000, and it's gone back to 50,000 on this version.
Yeah, it needs to be up, yeah. It's 60.
ABC got 360, so.
You can't recommend that it's just a release.
So maybe for next time, Andy, you can have them do whatever they do to upload those. So I would like to reduce the electricity town hall to like 1,000. Just a little bit, but.
Does that include everything else? Like the temperature changes, have we looked at that since when it's, when they're putting on the running heater?
Well, you think you're going to have it more in the winter time and less in the summer, so.
I feel like I'd be more certain it was 1,200.
What did you say for electricity town halls?
Well, it's at 1,800 now, proposing to make it 1,000, because right now the bill's about $80.
If it stays at $8, that'd be 11,000, something like that.
11, it's not 7,000.
1,100, sorry.
Chief?
You can do 1,000, because my two buildings, the highway buildings are 1,000, and we don't have a vote over an entire year. And we're in them a lot more than they're going to be in the library.
A little balance, would you say?
I think so.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, let's move that to 1,000. Steve, don't go away. The other ones I want us to look at are all, and I know this makes it easier, but it's also an easier target, all electricity in this particular line, any of those other ones we can look at? Transfer station, 6,500, the PSC, 20,500, town offices, 72, any of those we can tweak a little bit or not?
I don't, I think you might be able to tweak the transfer station down a tiny bit, because we've been able to save a fair amount of money by putting timers on all the.
It's a great idea.
On all the hydraulic equipment that doesn't move, so we can heat the oil up one day a week or two days a week instead of seven days a week.
Do you want to like take a look and see what we maybe just supposed to reduce that by?
If you look, I want a little piece of paper, so I can't see. What was it last year?
Uh, let's see.
Like what did we spend out of it last year?
Ooh. We got a transfer station that kept moving.
Transfer station. What are we looking for?
Electricity.
Say TS, electricity main, it's down toward the bottom.
50.
Oh, there it is, yep.
53?
53, 19, yep.
And what is it in for this year?
Zero.
Well, no. It's in for 60, 70, 7,200, uh, women.
No, 65.
65. So it was like $800 over. You probably reduce it by like 300 or 400, because that last year was the first full year having all those timers on all the equipment.
So can we reduce it by 400, what did you say, 400?
Yeah.
So like 61?
Yeah.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Steve.
61.
It'll be close, but we'll see.
The timers are a great idea, it's really smart.
We cut our bill in the wintertime from $900 a month to $450 a month by putting them in, so.
Great.
Excellent. Good. Anything else for the buildings?
What's the last line for the transfer station? Next last one?
Which, I don't, so a lot of these, I didn't know what they were, so.
Joint Loss and Safety Committee. I'll do one right before.
Government buildings, that's TS, I meant 1,400, is that what you have?
Yeah.
What is that?
That's the heat.
Uh, heat is above, oh, heat, so T, it doesn't happen to have where heat.
No, so the TS is the heat.
Okay.
That's propane for the transfer station.
Landscaping?
Top of the list?
So that landscaping line includes the ground maintenance for the transfer station, was taken out of the transfer station and put in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Steve. Cemetery? Insurance, that's one line item.
Yeah, can't change that, can we?
Other than that?
Oh, it's pretty cheap, I like whatever that is.
You? Police Department? Only question I have, the number that the chief has in here for new equipment, which is the crew right there, any wiggling on that number?
They've actually increased in price, but I'm going to be tight with that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, everything's going out of them.
Fair enough.
I have a question just for all the departments. I've seen all of our uniforms have gone up, and I know we tend to buy the uniforms right at the end of the fiscal year to use that amount. Do we, do we, is this inquiry something we really need, or is it possible you keep this at 5,000? The 6,000?
Specifically to the police department?
Well, for this one, but yeah, for all the different departments, I just noticed that that's, it's gone up everywhere.
Well, for the police department, it's throughout the year, because that's also the cost of replacing our bulletproof vests.
Right.
We have a grant, but that money doesn't come back, it goes to the general fund, not to, so.
Got it.
You know, on a cycle, we could replace one vest at $1,000, or we could have two or three that come out.
Right. So you don't know.
We don't know. And, you know, one winter jacket gets ripped in a fight, that's 500 bucks.
Right. So we don't know.
Anything in police department? No? Dispatch? And these are the numbers we've got from both entities, right? These are, okay. All right, fair enough. Ambulance? Anything in there? Fire department? Anything in here?
I think that's the same thing again with the personal particular government, I don't have a chance on, you need some clothes and what has to happen, so I don't know, I guess.
Nothing in there? Code enforcement? I would like to strike the 500 over time, hasn't been used for a while. I'll look into that. Emergency management?
Where did you go tonight? I missed that.
Chief?
It shows 5,600 for the EOC supplies, that should be 4,000. The 5,600 was the actual, the whole line.
Okay, perfect. So 4,000 you're in? Anything else in emergency management? Highway department? Anything in highway?
We don't need police details for the highway anymore. All gone.
The what?
I think police details is no longer on there for the highway.
No.
Mr. Willock, same thing, uniforms?
So we, I don't know how these guys do their uniforms, we use UniFirst, and they're terrible. And every three or four months, we get a slip that says due to driver shortages and stuff like that, they're increasing the price, so.
It's just going up. And we can't use anyone else, because there's no one that has.
Uh, we could use some other people, but they would put nonappropriation clauses in their contract, because they tried a few years ago, and they got shot down.
Probably take the cellphone reimbursement out of there as well, Steve?
Yeah, I left it in, because I wasn't sure where we were at.
Would that, 13,400?
No, we should definitely have the phones by.
The pandemic?
As I started this budget.
EOC, the 42,000 for hazard pay? Is that?
That was just 20, 20.
20, probably near 2021 budget.
Oh, do you know what that is?
Yeah, that was the, that was the phase the federal government gave us, and they needed to put it someplace, and they just put in the EOC line.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
So it's like a quick in and out.
Thank you.
I can offer one more out of mine.
Yeah.
Now, you could cut part-time on-call by 5,000, put it back where it was a few years ago.
Great, thank you.
Because now that we have Ben, the other CDL driver, I don't need to have as many CDL drivers come in that we're making the higher rate.
So don't, don't offer it up quite yet.
Okay.
Because I'm proposing that the truck driver full-time, this is a new person?
No, that's the one who's current, that's Ben.
Okay. Then I want the 5,000 over. So it's at 20 now, you think you can go to what, 15?
15.
And overtime's still at 18, Steve?
Yeah, it might actually have to go up a little bit more now, because that was prior to Pete Warren.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to put a question mark, can you get this down?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else in that section?
The rented and hired equipment line is sort of up and down, I don't know if that's something Steve could explain?
The, that's tree trucks and painting lines on the road and.
So it just depends on?
It depends on the year and how much time we have to be able to spend it and get it done.
And then R.
Gotcha.
And that must have been the government. Anything else in highway?
Um, Scott? That, that 5,000 that I was asking about, that's now in government buildings?
Yep.
Which one did that come out of? Because I don't see one that went down by that much on either of Steve's other budgets.
Uh, the buildings and maintenance went down.
Transfer station was 2,500, but we've been spending 37,92, 32,68 for the past three years.
So that's what, that's where, because there's another one in there for.
It has an increase, not just, there's 2,500, and there's a small increase in it, too, sorry.
Anything else in highway? I'd like us to look at paving and asphalt. So we've been spending 200, Steve put it at 250, but I would like to reduce that.
Are you behind already on paving? What are you, what are you about to say?
So this year, we actually spent 215, using covered funds from last year. The town, for years, had not paid over $70 a ton for hot top, and this year, the price jumped to 73,80, probably going to go up again next year, so to keep pace with what we've been doing. This is what we're anticipating it probably going to cost us to do the same amount of roads as we did last year.
Makes sense.
At some point, we also, there's a few years where we're later on paving coming up, but we're going to need to think about paving. This building's asphalt's 20 years old.
Wow.
About 25, it'll cost like 25,000 to pave it, or I can do a really good crack seal, seal coat job on it for half the price, and it'll last three years, so.
But then you still have to do the.
Paving anyway.
Paving anyway. All right, so you don't think we should change that?
Okay, but we're going to come back to it, because something's going to have to give, because we, we have not made close to anything in terms of close to 1.2 million dollar reduction.
That's great.
So you okay to do it for now, Mr. Brown, or you want to? I'm going to put a question mark, because we're going to come back to that.
You're so ahead.
Yep. Anything else in highway? No?
Does the gas, the gas seems to be going up, is that enough up there?
We're on state contract.
Okay, so we knew what we're going to be dealing with.
The state bid price is to the end of this fiscal year, we're doing now, so we're getting it for like a dollar 91 a gallon.
Okay.
So the company that bid it out when gas was cheap.
Is really sad, is it?
Yeah, sad and paying for it right now.
Okay. Great.
All right. Anything else in highway?
What explains the diesel numbers?
Diesel numbers?
In the past, it says 13,000 was approved, but only 3,800 was spent?
We haven't had a winter speak-up for three years, so we haven't really been using the trucks as much.
Okay.
We also had a lot of money in there for projects that we were going to do. The money was left there, because we thought we were going to get sand from Clay Lane, which we're not, so it's left high now, because we got the roll-off trucks, so that's how we're putting gas in the roll-off, or diesel in the roll-off truck.
Okay.
Peter, Paul?
And Andy, where did you end up sticking the half-time person for Steve?
The transfer station.
Transfer station.
She's got a transfer station part-time administrator.
Oh, okay.
And transfer station.
All right. I'm at the point that I can't support adding new people, because I think at some point, we're going to have to be starting to think about letting people go, so. I'm not in favor of adding anybody new, this is really the time.
I'm not in favor of overworking the people that we have, and so.
I understand that.
We're very capable to do their job.
So unless you're public work, Katrina, having the 7% tax increase, you're going to have to start fighting someplace, you can't keep doing that, so.
I agree, I appreciate that.
So, all right, Mr. Brown, I don't know where you are.
Oh. I don't know where I am.
You leave it in?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else in transfer station? Nope. Solid waste disposal? Nope.
All right, I can just pick that up. You've done a great job of recycling and bringing recovery down.
Yep. Next section is zeros, but they're animal feed over $100. They can basically follow that. Health agency, health service agency, anything in there? Nope.
Why was the, the people asked for less without, I pretty much knew they hadn't done so much.
Some, which one?
Goodwood and Hayley Health.
They, they base their ass on services being utilized. So if you utilize it less, they, a lot of less.
Right.
There's a couple of them that do that, but.
I am a huge fan of Luminade, but I do know that they had an incredible year. I'm just wondering if we want to, and I want to keep helping them, of course.
Yeah. Up to the group. Mr. Brown? He's proposing or not. I don't, we didn't.
I don't know what I'm proposing. Why don't you put a question mark?
Okay.
Health service agencies, except for.
Yep.
Okay, so we're on.
So we'll put a question, we're next on Luminade. Likely not funding them.
Only because they, they have so much right now to get on to do it. And we think we can refund it again. There we go. We'll pass on.
That is a fairly new request.
Anything else in that section?
No.
Or maybe we could just do 1,000 since this is new request or something like that. I don't know.
Well, we'll put it as a question mark for the moment, so. General assistance? And then direct welfare assistance, both of those. We can budget whatever we want, but if the expense comes up, we have to expend it, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we have to pay the person and that's the money, so.
Yep. Anything in those two? No?
Um, rental rent assistance is so high because it was this past month, this past year?
Rent assistance, that's what they usually, that's what usually is the highest thing they can do.
But that's.
More need.
More need this year is what you're saying.
Well, that's what they're anticipating.
Wasn't there so much more available this past year after we spent so much? Or that's just what we were considering this year? Because I knew that there's been a lot more rental assistance from the government in the past year.
So let's see. Yeah, that's, what is it? Almost $6,000, we budgeted 15.
Right. And then it was 10,000 the year before.
Well, it's one of those things, you can budget zero.
Right.
But if you've got to expend it, you've got to expend it, so you probably budget a dollar, but you know.
No, I mean, obviously we need to have it. I'm just asking, are we going to use that? If you're, we're cutting all these other things, so.
If you want to reduce it, you can. Because the thing is, if the need is there, you have to expend it. You can't say, oh, I don't have any budget.
Right, of course.
If you want to reduce it, what, to 10?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm just, we still don't have to spend it if we have to spend it, but if it's not.
Okay. Reducing rental assistance to 10,000, you okay with that, Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry.
Rental assistance, reducing it to 10,000?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else in there? No? Parks and Rec?
I know how I feel. I personally will just say again that I think that Oyster Reef Association could be making this money through proper fundraising and having people that are involved and actively utilizing it. Raising that money, there's a ton of room for improvement in the fundraising world. I think that it's a small portion of our community that gets to use it. And I, I think it's a great program and I'm in no way saying anything bad about them. I just know that fundraising should be part of any group and their fundraising dollar per effort is really skewed. So I personally think I'd rather have that money going towards things that are open to more people in our town.
Because basically what this is, is a subsidy. So if we gave them nothing, they, the people from Lee would pay the full rate.
The difference that a person from Lee is, is about 20 bucks for their, for their.
Yep.
So $15,000, save $20 for 240 kids is not the number of kids that he's. I don't remember exactly.
That was the right number of kids, although there was quite a bit of overlap for number of programs and the actual usages were higher.
So some families might save $100, some might, but the numbers didn't make sense to me as far as how much we're saving per child for how much we're spending. And I, I just think that there's, um. I think there's a lot of room to fundraise and have the people that are involved in the program.
Look, if you don't mind me asking, I just want to ask you because I missed it. What is that 3,500 dollar bump under Town Fair? It goes 4, 4, then 7,500.
Those are fireworks.
That's the fireworks.
Fireworks under rec events, isn't it?
Works in rec, it was 4,000, then it was 7,500, which is what we didn't spend and then we did.
Yeah, I just wonder what caused the 3,500 dollar bump, that's all.
Well, in terms of.
Down to the fireworks, like 8,000, right?
Yeah, but how's it?
We have a balance and a fair budget.
Yeah. They have a capital reserve fund that's part of it. So what do we want to do with Parks and Rec? Oyster Reef?
Dover, Durham does not add money from the town for.
Nope. Durham does not. Madre still does for Durham, though.
I would like to cut it.
Mr. Brown? I don't know. You want to leave it or you want to cut it? Oyster Reef?
All right.
You leave it?
Yep.
Okay. For now, I would like to keep it. I'll put a question mark next to it because I think we probably have to go back to it. Oh, oh, Eric?
Go ahead, finish your, I just had another question after you finish your discussion.
Go ahead.
The last line, electricity, is that, who pays for that now?
Um, that's in number of buildings.
And it was always split?
So you just added it into the.
Yeah, and, and it was always split. Or I paid for half the electricity down there, the town paid for the other half. Is how I understood it.
Okay. Anything else? Parks and Rec?
So if we don't have a person to help program coordinate, which we've cut, then that means.
We haven't cut it.
Well, no.
ABC did.
All right, well, ABC cut it. I, I don't.
Let's be aware of what we're talking about.
That's fine, that's fine. It's, it's cut in this part right here, from ABC. So if we cut that, then that means that Oyster Reef continues to control our fields and we have no ability to make revenue. I just want to say that in other towns that have had a person who's in charge of recreation, that after the first year becomes revenue that actually the town makes. It greatly increases the mental health and, and physical health of the residents in the town. It's a vital part of bringing community together. And one of the biggest things that we struggle with is how to get people together. So for me to cut a program coordinator who would really help this community flourish, while we go ahead and continue to pay for something that other, other towns aren't even paying for is frustrating.
So just to be clear, ABC cut it.
That's fine. I'd like to add it back in into the budget.
You want to add it too?
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to cut it. The other one.
All right.
My plan was to pay for it.
So the part-time program coordinator, adding the 10,000 back? Okay. Anything else in parking rights? Uh, library? Anything in there? Nope, I didn't have anything. I don't have any. All right. Patriotic purposes?
The, the only thing I would mention is that you've got these lines zeroed out. If you ever want to put anything into that, you should consider putting a dollar in the line. So it's over for this not close?
Are you trying to add by $4? It doesn't make sense.
See off-chance that you might want to.
Yep.
Put some funds there.
Pick here on the purposes, it's already 250, so.
I'd be saying the next one called Culture and Recreation.
Okay. Well, none of those particular organizations ask for funds, so.
You could let them zero out, is what you're saying.
Yep. Well, they're not asking for any money. Conservation Commission, you okay with that?
Uh, what, oh, yeah, that was for the bridges.
Yep.
And that's going to be ARPA money, but why is that appropriate?
That'll become zero, correct?
Well, we gave them some money. This is for the other ones, so.
Okay, and you're looking for about 7, 800 dollars of ARPA money with that.
Yeah, but we don't think it's going to be that much because Steve thinks he has some gravel or something.
Yeah.
Which was the big.
Made handmade, a lot of things, and all of it's.
So for right now, are we okay with that number?
Yeah.
Uh, long-term debt, can't do anything about that. Long-term debt interest, can't do anything about that. So we can, we can. Folks?
Yes.
Yeah, you're kicking over my job. I'm going to have to get fired.
I'm paying attention.
You were asking about the cruiser. I was just thinking, we have this special duty line item. Um, the last time Joanne looked at it, it was around 25,000. I know Scott wants to buy some equipment. I don't know if that's going to go through, how much he's going to use, but our, our officers are still working details. So, you know, there could be at least 10,000 in there. That's guaranteed, it's not going to go anywhere. We could use that towards, you know, the equipment for the new car and try to cut that back a little bit.
I'm part of that degree.
Yeah, let's go back.
Anybody else have money they can shake from the money tree?
So how, because we have to grow his budget, chief, so. Any suggestions, Andy? Because we have to grow his budget, we can't say, okay, well, 10,000 of this has come from someplace else.
Right, so you're up about, uh, from 4,574 to 5,160.
In terms of the chief's offer, though. It's looking, because the vehicle, you're talking about the stuff that can add it on, right? Like the light bars and all.
Yeah, the total cost of, of the car, so we can. A lot of the equipment will take off of one car if we can get a charger. So that'll stay there, so it could go offset the price of the car. You know, hopefully we'll be able to trade a car in, which should be able to help cut, but we don't know that until we get closer.
As long as you've got a line with that purpose for expenditure, we should be able to move money as you see fit.
Okay. Well, we'll leave it for now and then just see that.
I'm waiting for some numbers on what the cars should be, they're just, they're so far out in production that.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. I'm going to get the chips, man.
Is the math correct for the capital reserve funds?
No.
What about?
FY '22 and FY '23 have a difference in their line items of $15,000, but the total differs by $85,000?
As far as I can tell, those are not the numbers that the ABC recommended for.
Okay.
So just making a quick look. See, crew benefits, ABC recommended nothing. Car equipment, we recommended 230, and this is what, 175, so. Personally myself, I wouldn't even look at that last column because it's incorrect. Not every single number is incorrect, but those numbers are not right.
Okay, don't we have to look at that next column to make a budget?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, so I recommend that you look at it.
Yes, yes, well, that's what I've asked them to do, so.
Also, the warrant, the draft warrant are based on these numbers.
Draft warrant. In terms of, which one?
Draft warrant articles.
Board articles are based on.
Are based on this column.
Yeah, so they're wrong.
Yeah.
Well, let me take that back. They're not what the ABC recommended. The board hasn't talked about those, so as we go through those, we can win the battle.
They're what your board has been looking at.
Yeah, so. I think the next time, Joanne and, or whoever can upload what the ABC actually recommended.
So the ABC went through all of this and they found what they found. We just went through all of this and we found a few thousand dollars here and there. So we're going to either have to make major changes.
Yeah, well, it's up to the board in terms of what you want to present. Because I would say, not that I have a crystal ball, but if you present to the voters approximately 7% increase, they're going to go with the default budget. As far as I've been in terms of involved with this government, we've never had default budget as far as I remember. But when you start pushing people that hard, they're going to push back, which means you're not going to get any of these things that we're increasing.
What total number that would have to be decreased in order to get us to the number that would be during?
I can tell you that right now. Because 3% is probably, I'm comfortable with 3. So that's like half of that. So you're going to have to go.
I mean, inflation is five, so it's very frustrating for me to think that we're going to just stick to that old number from years ago with inflation alone, because that's what happens, numbers changes are as it's.
Yes. Well, I'm just telling you what I think.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just saying, I'm not sure we can get down to three. Because now what we're really doing is spending a lot less than we were. And what are we going to cut to get to there?
Well, you're not spending less, you're spending 3% more, so.
Technically, though, with inflation being higher, you're cutting, you're spending less dollar for dollar.
I see what you mean.
With inflation.
So, but yeah, but in terms of, we're looking at a 1.2 million dollars, that gives you 6%. So if you want to cut it like in half to like three and a half, you're going to have to cut 600,000. And you don't have 600,000. And the thing is, the other thing that's not in here is we even talked about the salary increase. We've got marketing stuff that we've already done. And all those ones that we assigned to ARPA funding are going to hit this particular budget. So those increases, yeah, we even talked about the salary.
Merit.
Which is the cost of living and all of those stuff, so. And just in terms of the spreadsheet that Andy gave me today, every time you increase our salary base, which is a little over $2 million, uh, by 1%, that's 25,000. So that even pushes you, let's say you went for a 5% increase at home, just for, it's 130,000 dollars. So you can't, in my opinion, you can't keep pushing all these expenses because. Because when it gets to it, if they go down this particular operating budget and the default budget goes in the queue, none of those things are in there. You've got, um, you probably have a list of the ones that are in the default budget, but certain things blow up because that's what the IRS says. All these things that are adding for enhanced, with like new personnel, they're not in there. All this stuff goes away.
No, and the only thing that really changed with regard to creation of the default budget was removing the revaluation cost because that was a one-time expense. So your default budget is, you know, what, 35,000? Whatever the rebal costs were or less.
So, but that's what my crystal ball says. My crystal ball could be totally wrong, but I don't think so.
For the next hearing, could you have a column that was an estimate of what the default budget would be?
Yeah, I've got the actual default budget. Give you that number if you'd like. And what we'd be looking at right now is, is the total default budget would be $4,540,448.
And right now, just based on what the ABC, without these salary increase pools, we're at 5.6 million. So that's a significant difference. Any other questions? No? Shall we move over to the boards so we can go through those? Andy, you want to talk to three things?
Sure. Um, the first article, Article One, obviously has nothing to do with the budget, that's the town officers. Article Two has nothing to do with the budget, is in regard to temporary signs. There was some language in the temporary sign ordinance that specifically affected political signs, limited the number of political signs you might have on your lawn to one for a period of 30 days, which after talking to council, I was advised that's a, a bad idea to have on the books and have in writing. I have talked to Mr. Sawtelle this evening, who wants to review this with me to make sure that we're not excluding temporary agricultural product signs, which I think is a very legitimate. uh, which I think is a very legitimate, uh, concern, and I will certainly confirm with Mr. Sawtelle and the Agricultural Commission if necessary. Um, warrant Article Three, again, nothing to do with the budget. This is in regard to subdivision regulations and road naming. The board had had some discussion about this. Um, I had attempted to, uh, put together a warrant article for the first section of that appendix in the zoning regulations. That's a fairly lengthy, it was written almost along the lines of a letter or an essay, as opposed to an ordinance. Gives some recommendations, makes comments about past names, that sort of thing, and I attempted to sort of take that first part out of it. Warrant Article Four, the board asked me to bring this. There are no numbers in this, and this is, this is the RSA prescribed language for modifying your elderly exemption. Um, and the, the board had had some discussion about whether they wanted to increase, uh, the elderly tax exemption offered. Um, just for reference, right now, Lee's eighty-plus exemption is two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. The seventy-to-seventy-nine exemption is two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, and the sixty-five-to-seventy-four exemption is a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. I had done a, sort of a comparison to other communities, and as far as generosity with regard to those exemptions, Lee is in the, uh, top seven in the state for the eighty-plus, is in the top five for the seventy-five-to-seventy-nine, um, exemption, and is in the top five for the sixty-five-to-seventy-four. And we ranked tenth for maximum assets, which you can also change in this warrant article, and we are currently, we currently allow maximum assets of two-hundred-twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That gives you an idea of where you are in there.
So, Andy, could, for the next time, could you fill in the blanks with what we actually have at the moment? So, looking?
Yes, I left those open, so you could possibly plug in what you wanted, but I can, I'll put in parentheses what you presently have.
That'll be great.
Okay. Um, warrant Article Five is self-explanatory. Um, warrant Article Six, two, okay, and five, what's the default again, four, one, six? Uh, four-point-five, hold on one second. Default, uh, is four million, five hundred forty thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Most of these remaining are capital reserve funding items that you have traditionally done. Um, based upon the board's recommendation, I had plugged in last year's numbers to these warrant articles. Um, that's why they're the way they are, and why they're, might not match with, uh, ABC suggestions at this time.
Do you wanna, 'cause we kinda went through these. Can we, how are we feeling in terms of what the ABC recommended for those numbers? Can we put those in?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking everybody.
I mean, I think I would like to see what they are, what the ABC said, and what the numbers are that are there.
Okay.
And then, I'm assuming that the people that these relate to have looked at the numbers?
Well, let's, let's put in what the ABC said, and then let's have people react to that.
And the ABC numbers, have they come from going through the one?
Yes, and we'll prove it, and explain it. Like, I, I know Number Six, ABC recommended two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. I know Number Seven, Fire Department Sisters, they recommended...
Four-six is two-thirty.
Thirty thousand. So, Number Seven, they recommended thirty thousand. Town buildings, other than the regulations, that's from, I think, six, well, that was from last year, so that's not applicable this year, eight. Yeah, eight, eight was from last year, so let's get rid of that one.
They submitted a new one.
Yeah.
They submitted a new one for this year to continue to go forward. It just shouldn't have the withdrawal part on it, right?
Right.
Correct?
Um, yeah, we noticed, today, Andy and I noticed that Article Eight was what we did last year. Um, but we wanted to have one this year that would put a hundred thousand into the other capital reserve fund.
Okay.
Now, take, that's one.
I have the wording right here if you want.
So, could you provide that to the town administrator, so he can skip that in for the next version? All right, so, Andy, can you put that in for the next version?
I can, and I, I'm just, uh, rea, the reason you're seeing these numbers is because the, the board specifically suggested that we put last year's numbers.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Number Nine, the ABC put in sixty thousand for that. Number Ten. Hundred-and-ten thousand.
What was that based on?
Uh, financial planning pool.
Okay.
Um, transfer station equipment, ninety-four for Number Eleven, that includes the payback for the oil truck. Town buildings, capital reserves, two hundred thousand. Number Twelve, excuse me?
This is where the money's gonna spend, I guess.
Uh, Number Thirteen, reevaluation fund. We put in zero. Uh, internal service expendable trust, zero. Fifteen, that comes out of the unassigned fund balance, so that's fine. Sixteen is null and void, that was just last year's. Uh, and Seventeen was a change of purpose, I believe. Mr. Tappin, is it that one? You need to be tweaked again this year?
Uh, the, the problem with last year's is that the select board was not renamed as the agent to expend.
Correct.
This has been corrected, the Article Seventeen that I listed, now does name the select board as the agents to expend.
Correct.
And Eighteen. This is the one that creates the committee to do the center of capital...
Yeah, this would remove the authority for the capital improvement plan from the planning board and move it to a committee appointed by the board's selection. Uh, the only requirement for those appointed members under the RSA that enables you to do this is that you have to have at least one planning board member, um, as an appointed member.
Does it mention in terms of what, so it says at least one member, so how many members can be on the committee, does that what they say?
You can set the number of members. Uh, the communities that I looked at tended to be either five or seven. Uh, the ones that had seven or more members included the DPW director, the fire chief, and the police chief as members. Um, the communities with smaller numbers typically had a selectors rep, a planning board rep, one or two citizen reps, and, uh, maybe one department had that type of thing.
Okay, sounds good, all right. Have we had any other submitted warrant articles? I know that deadline's not for the first part of the month.
Right, there's about two weeks left for people to, uh, place petition warrant articles, and I have seen nine and a half checked with the town clerk, and I think has come into these, like, this part.
So, if you could update that, that would be great.
I will.
All right. Anything else? So, if you can get out those updated documents for us to review, that would be great.
I, I will have those updated documents, uh, almost immediately.
Can I ask, just relative to that, when I read it, I don't know. They recommend a program of municipal capital improvement expenditure. What is that? At what, at what level do we call it? A capital improvement?
Typically, if it has a lifespan of, of six years or more, and a lot of communities use a twenty-five thousand dollar cost as their base, generally, exceptions are made to that twenty-five thousand dollar base, um, depending on lifespan.
I mean, if we're gonna say a capital improvement program for, then I think we need to know what's the threshold of a capital improvement.
I, I think just in, in general overview, you could say that at least a six-year, um, projection, and at least a twenty-five thousand dollar cost. That's probably the most common earmark used by municipalities in Hampshire, although it's, it's all over the place, somewhere as well as...
Why do we have something?
How many of those expenditures are under twenty-five thousand, do we know? 'Cause I know that was one thing that we hadn't clearly planned for, with all those little things that are part of that.
The financial planning tool had a number of things, like, as I recall, the skid steer, uh, attachments, that type of thing that had been put in there.
And those things were included because they were under the amount that was on there before, so it just makes me concerned to not have that, because then you, you aren't saving for those things.
Well, there's still gonna be two different things.
Two things, right, that's fine, yeah.
Financial, the capital improvement program and the financial planning tool are two different things.
Right.
And the thing is, Mr. Brown, if you're concerned about what those definitions are, we can put that in one article.
Yeah.
We can say six years, whatever that can be, and then the committee has direction in terms of what they're supposed to be looking at. Okay?
Question, Eric?
What's the current threshold for the current CIP?
I believe it's five.
Five thousand, five years, that's what it was. So, is it necessary to change that?
Yeah.
Well, I think you need to, 'cause this committee is gonna be different. Since right now, the legislative body has instructed the planning board to do this capital improvements plan. This would change it, so the responsibility is the committee, not the planning board.
But my question is, is it gonna change the current CIP, then are you gonna have to redo that because of the extended time period to six years for a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars? How's that gonna change the current CIP?
Do we have to change it, I guess?
I, I don't believe you have to have a hard and fast definition for your CIP. As I mentioned, a, a number of towns have a general overriding definition that they use, but they make exception to, as necessary.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure that you can. You, you appoint the committee, but I don't believe that the select board can then micromanage the committee to tell them how to do their job.
Right. So, we don't have to, what you're saying is, you've seen it in the other ones, we're saying we had it a different way, so do we change it?
Yeah, you're not, and even if the, the CIP committee adopts their definition, that they're not ironclad bound to hold that definition. If they decide, "Well, this seventy-two-hundred-dollar item is, got an eight-year life, and even though it's not at the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, we wanna include it," they're, they're certainly free and able to do that.
Any other questions? Last item is approval of the default budget, which you have done. Everyone?
No.
The default, the default is the amount that you're... We don't have a choice.
You don't, and that's the amount that I gave you, uh, four billion, five hundred forty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Right.
And I have the motion in writing.
Could we do? So, move to accept the default budget for fiscal year 2022, as presented. Do you have to read them yet?
Second. Are you ready to say aye?
Aye, yes.
Aye. Motion passes? All right, any other comments for the public?
Do we have to talk about...
What?
I did, 'cause I don't want to interrupt me. Uh, oh, so we're gonna go on, I think you're saying, to close on that.
Yes, we have to, I'm just asking if there's anybody that wants to make any comments or anything that they'd like to say. Mr. Boon, please.
One, one item that you went by pretty quickly, I think probably because it's hard to have a conversation about it, uh, is the, uh, the amount being spent on computers and IT. So, that's going up thirty-three percent versus the previous year, and I understood we, we talked about servers. I'm, I'm afraid that the town may be in an asymmetric information problem here, in that the computer dude says it's gonna be this much, much money, and you say, "Okay, we don't want the computers to break." But there's lots of people in the town, I'm one, who works in technology and could maybe add some more due diligence to those contracts, and perhaps offer alternatives there, so something going up by thirty-three percent, and the amount being spent on phones just seems like out of line with reality to me. Now, being presented with details, I'm, I'm sure I could be persuaded that sixty-five hundred dollars a year is somewhere within the realm of reasonableness, but other things could be adjusted down, and the town has expertise there. We have advisory committees on just about every other subject you can think of. Uh, so we could put together some people to help the town evaluate contracts like that, so it's not just take the nerd's word for it, which I can tell you is, it's not a good way to proceed, and you've got nerds on your own side, so...
I think that the number for that actually comes from purchasing, we haven't done a good job of making sure that we have updated computers. So, all of our computers were vastly old, and some had been taken from a swap shop. So, I think the plan was to actually upgrade and make sure that we had, um, computers that were functioning, and that's where that, that's not IT guys, but that's actually...
Out of that lopsided, uh, outside of the lopsided, um, phone line, which I will, uh, get you more information on, the majority of that, uh, my concern is the, uh, the servers, primarily for the police and for the town office, both of which have not been replaced based on the original replacement schedule. And we've had some other computers, um, that I've talked with the board about, the ones that were running Windows Seven, and were two thousand and fourteen models that, um, we had, uh, three of them that we had severe problems with in the last three months, and just decided it was not worth trying to keep anything along.
People are spending so much time dealing with the, the broken technology and not being able to do what they need to do, that, that we're wasting those man-hours that right there, that are, you know, to try to, to try to work with a computer that's so outdated.
And that accounts for the ten thousand dollar increase in computer services on that line?
It does not, that's primarily, uh, um, concern over First Light's billing increase, a part of which we've already seen in this budget cycle, um, as well as some other service costs. But I can get you a breakdown, if you'd like to see a, a copy of those computer services. I have the vendors specifically with what we're paying them.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I would be interested in seeing something like that, and especially if, if we can shop around and find a different solution that makes it easier for committees to work with files too, 'cause right now we have no file retention policy at all for committees.
Eric?
Don't run off. Question for everybody, where, where are these numbers coming from now, and is there, or maybe Steve knows the answer to this, is there any kind of a state contract that you can plug into to get multibine? I mean, some of these numbers are pretty high. I gotta get a new phone before next month, and nobody can tell me what replaces the one I have, but I don't need something that's gonna be, um...
Do you still have one of those footphones?
Yes.
Eric, Eric, do you still have one of those footphones? Uh-oh, here it is.
So do I.
Yep, yep, yep.
And it's bond proof, and that's all I need.
Still sell them. Well, three G's going away, so he's gonna have to...
Yeah, and on that front, I can tell you that we, uh, we lost the welfare director's phone, because that was an AT&T three-G phone. We have been bumped twice on a delay for town, uh, cell phones, which is being done through municipal government contract, um, which, after looking at what we could get directly, uh, from Verizon, uh, that there were some clear advantages to the municipal contract. Uh, the one, uh, distraction that we did not realize when I signed the contract to get the phones from Verizon was that we would get bumped, uh, a couple of three months before delivery. But, um, we are, those phones should ship on January third, that is the, uh, the government, uh, contract that, that's available, uh, with federal agencies on down, um, a very competitive rate, um, very standard phone, nothing too flashy, it's an iPhone eight, you know, standard issue, but, um, we are indeed looking at that sort of thing. The other thing that I'm, uh, doing is I'm talking with a, a group called Granite, which, um, essentially remarkets, uh, telecommunications services. They have assured me that they can give me a considerably more competitive rate, um, on basically everything that we've got, uh, without changing lines and without changing carriers. They just aggregate, they, they're just about everybody in the telecommunications business right now, and they are... And they are taking a look at our billing cycles and are getting back to me with a hard and fast estimate. So I'm, I'm hoping to see some savings there. They can perhaps, you know, depending on how quickly they can get back to me, could be incorporated in this budget.
And with town, it's not just that it's getting the best, the cheapest, whatever. We have to make sure it's safe as well. I think that's, that's the key, is making sure that everything we have is not allowing people in the back doors because that can become a million-dollar, million-dollar challenge.
One thing that Mr. Bloom Chris brought up, which I don't know if the board's interested, but his idea in terms of having an IT committee, I think that has merit.
Absolutely.
And I think, as he expressed it, I think, I don't know if the words in his mouth, but we need some nerds on our side. So maybe, is that something, maybe Andy, can you work it up like a charge?
That'd be great, I am.
And see if you can get people interested in doing that? And maybe the purview would be they look at all of our IT stuff. Maybe there's something that can be done better. Maybe there's a better way to acquire things. And you could put Mr. Bloom Chris on the top of that list.
It'd be great to continue to have a plan too, you know? This is something that we want to think about in the future.
Another thing they could look at is in terms of the cycle, in terms of equipment and stuff. But I know that's something that Andy's working on.
That's great, I love that, Andy.
All right, anything else? Last call. All right, I think we will close the public hearing. Item number four, Tasha Lewis. Yes. Finally she gets up.
I apologize, Ms. Lewis, I should have put you on before.
No, I really actually appreciated listening to all of that. Being a new resident, that's very important, so. Um, yeah, so I've been here for two years. And when I saw the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, the two spots available, I thought that I would put forth my nomination. I've provided my background, and I think that my, my educational background, my professional background, and just my overall desire with respect to conservation and a lot of the public outreach and wanting to be able to be involved in this community is relevant. So really, that's what I just wanted to, to put that forth and give the board an opportunity so I can introduce myself since I am new to this community. But I would be honored to represent the town of Wade, so thank you.
Any questions from the board members?
I was so impressed with all the experience you have, that sounds like the perfect match for you.
Well, thank you.
Can I ask you one question on your application? There's one thing in terms of the nights that you can meet or can't meet. Is there a problem in terms of meeting when they usually meet or?
No, so there was several questions. And I think the first one I marked was that I was pretty much available any day of the week. And I marked the first two. I didn't check all of them because I think the last two on the application indicated that I had conflicts, which I don't. My schedule is pretty flexible.
That's great, thank you. So glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
So I move to approve the appointment. Tasha Lewis is a member of the Lamprey River Management Advisory Committee. Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes? And is there something for us? Yes, there's something for us to sign.
You have the letter now, so included with the default budget signature page.
Here's the, back and forth. Oh, really?
You think that you're signing, the other ones you're signing the correct?
I forgot me, anyway.
All right, Elseth? Item number five, Indy Robinson, Town Administrator. Hey, I will be brief. I updated the town hall policy that we discussed. I had corrected the term use for the town hall from the historic town hall to just the town hall. Policy now reads the least left one policy regarding public usage of the town hall located in Seven Mass Road. In Hampshire is as follows at this time and moving forward until rescission. Use of the town hall shall be limited to daytime use by the public library for its children's programming and said use shall be restricted to the 1,250 square foot first floor space formally identified as the selectmen's office. No other use of the town hall for public gathering is permitted without approval of the board.
Great.
Sounds good. I have the signature page for that.
You can wash mine first. You have a, you have, I have one of those triple ones with a.
I have a number of KN95s available in the town administrator's office too, for people that want them, I can bring them.
Excellent, thank you.
Moving on to item B, electricity usage report for the annex building. And this is the town hall annex. I went back to the beginning of this fiscal year. The most expensive month has been the December billing. That was $32.52 for the month. The low was this summer at $17.38 a month. And it seems to be September, October, November were all $29. So I, I think for the cooler months, you're, you know, in the $30 a month range. And in the warmer months, you're in the $20 a month range.
So if you can, just like we did with the, the library and the town hall, can you keep track of that? Let's take a look at that. Are you wrong?
Aye, Eric.
You have a question. Andy, is that just usage or is that the, the base charge for the meter too?
Uh, I believe it's the base charge for the meter as well.
So you're, what's that, $15 now?
Yep, somewhere on there.
So it's not a lot of money that you're spending on electricity?
No, and I think the primary defense, I believe the alarm system for the old town hall actually goes underground and is wired into the annex.
Just keeping a little bit of heat out of the free space, right?
Yeah, right.
So even if you don't use electricity, the bottom line is you're still paying $15 or $10 a month?
So we were looking at the difference.
Item C, Stratford Regional Planning Commission dues decision. And this was just, threw this on here to see if we could get a hard and fast decision. Denise did talk to the planning commission. If we pay this year's dues, they would take six months. I believe it was 2670, 2672 moving forward for this year as opposed to the annual dues.
I know that I was working with gentlemen on looking at the bike lanes and different ideas, and we are able to continue to work with them because we are members. So that's a loss right there of a lot of great funding. And we also have the plan still to get a list for, what is it called?
The scanning?
Scanning, yeah. So for $2,600, it seems like a good one. And then, you know, we would know.
I'm sorry, the exact is $2,796.26.
Ann?
Ann Tappin commenting regarding the Conservation Commission. At the last Conservation Commission meeting, which was November 30th, the Stratford Regional Planning Commission was discussed. And I read a very brief entry from the minutes of that meeting. Two years ago, the town lease stopped paying dues to Stratford Regional Planning Commission. John Jeans asked if the Conservation Commission members saw value in using the services provided by Stratford Regional Planning Commission. All members replied in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. So you have a, you have a motion there someplace, Andy, right?
I do.
So tell me again what the number is? Oh, it's $1,000, okay. So I move to grant the town administrator permission, oh, this is scary, to enter into agreement with the Stafford Regional Planning Committee, Commission, excuse me, to become a dues-paying member effectively immediately for the remainder of fiscal 2022 in the amount of $2,796.26. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Yeah, I agree with that. Motion passes. Doesn't make a difference if we voted no or aye.
I was just wondering if you were going to steal that, so.
Unanimous support from the select.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the final design for the 16 by 24 carved and painted high-density urethane sign to be placed at the baseball field. And this was the, the end result of the Sarno family's request for some sort of memorial dedication. And I do have the, well, you've actually already made the, the motion to move forward with this.
Just to approve the final, yeah.
Yeah, the pre-engraved plates are, the sign with the pre-engraved plates is $435, and the cost of engraving future plates is $35 each.
And it can take more than the eight, right? Or how do you?
Oh, well, that's the, I have to, you know, ask them to redesign it to do more than that, but that's.
We have one right now.
Yeah, we only have one, but.
How many would you like? I guess I could.
I don't know.
This design was set up specifically with eight spaces.
Maybe between, maybe ten?
I'll just, if you put in, I don't know, maybe, maybe if we go more than eight, maybe there would be a similar kind of thing attached to the bottom of it.
I would assume you could do wings on the side or the bottom.
Well, are there nameplates? Is that what they are?
They are.
There'll be little plates, yeah.
They're engraved nameplate, oh, they?
Well, they'll probably just be, you know, I don't know.
They're 16 by 24.
Oh, wow.
So you could, you could potentially decrease the size.
I only have one now.
One, right.
Elseth?
Yes.
So you're in general agreement that it's okay to proceed with the?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, COLA discussion, and there's not anything specific to that. I gave you the northeastern unit CPI index. It's at 6% over the course of the year. You can see that the climate is as high as it's probably ever been. ARPA funding, we have the requested action or recommendations for the projects that we picked out. One change here, and I do have the motion. In reviewing these costs with Steve Bullock, Scott Nemec, and the police chief, it is roundly believed that we could come in under $30,000 for the bug house repair and include the fire department ventilation in that and quite possibly be able to handle the police department air conditioning and ventilation as well, which was at $21,000. That would certainly be in addition to the 30, but, so I included that. I don't know if you want to take that out or not. We have a balance of $184,659 in the ARPA fund. If you include the police air conditioning, you've got a maximum there of $144,350. And if you didn't include the police area, you'd be at $122,630.
And the police wouldn't have air conditioning?
Well, we, we have the window AC units, but the, the problem is, and I don't think I've mentioned this before, our information room, where all of our servers are and our radios, the consoles, that doesn't get any AC.
It's so hot.
So we've been trying, we put a little box unit up in the corner to try to draw some of it. That wasn't working. We put a box bin in the ceiling, but the joint loss committee said nay. Didn't take that out. It was trying to draw the heat out of the room. So that, that is a big issue. That's where all of our communications are in that closet. Does this number include fixing that issue or not? Well, if, if it fixes our AC downstairs, the ductwork goes into that room. Okay, all right. So.
And that would be the hundred, the total of all of those would be $144,350, although it'd probably be a little lower than that because we don't anticipate spending $30,000 on the bunk room.
So why don't? You got a cramp. He's getting old.
I saw the, we ran into a problem Christmas Eve.
Oh, yes.
With a fire, with another furnace.
It's had everything fun on Christmas.
Steve did talk to me this morning about this, and the highway furnace went over the weekend. And we have the town hall furnace specified in the ARPA funding as the most important, but for just about exactly the same money, we could.
You can look through the wall of our furnace and see the flames inside the firebox. It still does run, but I think we'd probably get in a lot of trouble if it wasn't in some separate room outside.
So, well, no matter what we put in for numbers, you guys are going to try to find it as, as cheap as possible.
Oh, yeah.
So I would suggest, how about if we just add to these particular motions, a same motion as the town hall furnace for the, which highway department?
But you're saying.
Old fire station, so be the annex, yeah, the annex.
It's the highway department.
So are you saying you need a separate building, separate area for that?
There's our, it's in a separate area. If it wasn't in a separate area, it probably wouldn't be good.
They would all be having carbon monoxide problems if it wasn't in a separate area.
So we have the money, we can do it because they just cut the other things and it's still less than.
Well, it's still less than $180.
Yeah, I think that definitely needs to be repaired.
So how about, how about if we do these, is this different than what you sent out earlier?
Yes. Well, with the new furnace.
No, I didn't include the new furnace. That has one for.
But the air conditioning is in there.
And the air conditioning is in there as well.
So that's the old one, so I'm ignoring that one. All right, so let's, how about if we do these one by one? You okay with that?
Yeah.
So.
Does that drive them crazy?
I gave you too much information.
Let's do the most important one first. I move to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed $14,880 to replace the highway department annex furnace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I move to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed $14,880 to replace the town hall furnace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, they're competition.
I was just doing it.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I move to approve the ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed $5,250 to replace the highway department shed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Good, too. Any discussion? No? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All those in favor, motion passes. Move to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed $30,000 to build out bunk rooms in the fire department and fix the fire department's second floor air conditioning, excuse me, air conditioning vent system. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed $5,000. Wait a minute, yes, $5,250 to replayer slash replace the historical society's ramp slash entrance. I don't like all these slashes.
Well, that's what it is.
Second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to repair slash replace the police department's air conditioning system. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, second page.
Thank you, ARPA.
All right, this is the one for the, the pneumatic vehicle exhaust extraction system. Oh my goodness.
Let's get that done.
All right, we all set with this one too?
Yes.
And where's the one that's?
Wait, are we gonna aye it?
Wait a minute, we're into, oh, here it is. So I move to approve the use of ARPA funding to purchase a pneumatic, uh, vehicle exhaust extraction system from air cleaning specialist for the fire department apparatus bay for an amount not to exceed six, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Two seconds. No discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Remove to approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed four thousand dollars to complete the necessary electrical work for the installation of the pneumatic, pneumatic vehicle exhaust extraction system for the fire department apparatus bay. Do I have a second?
And that's the right amount that we've kept into?
Four thousand, that's what I asked them to do.
Okay, aye.
Any second? Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh my goodness. All right. Those two are mine, you can have these back. Anything else, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, one small item under miscellaneous, and I received a letter from the, you received a letter actually from the league conservation commission that ended up on my desk. Um, and the, it's from Don Jeans, the chair. Uh, and she mentions that in a recent letter from Stacy Hernandez, uh, Conservation Easement Stewart for the Society for the Protection of the Hampshire Forests, uh, she inquired if the town has any management plans for two conservation easement properties that they monitor. Uh, that would be the Mod Jones Memorial Forest and the Town Forest Complex. And, uh, she mentioned, uh, she gives an overview of some of the trail work and bridge work that they intend to do, um, in the town forest. Uh, bog platform was replaced in twenty-twenty-one, some other items for the Mod Jones. Uh, she indicates that work has been done to improve trails and the side of the road parking will be modified to allow cars to get off the street. And, um, she thought that you might want to pass this along. And if that, uh, meets with the agreement of the board, I can certainly pass this along, uh, to Ms. Hernandez at the Protection of Hampshire Forest Society.
Thank you.
And that was, I believe, all I have.
That's it. All right, item number six, anything in there? Anybody wants to pull out? No?
No.
No? So I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. You have some things for us to sign? Andy?
Right here.
I just think everyone in our town that worked through that storm on the holiday, that was terrible timing and appreciate all of the work they're working.
Steve, do you want to talk to us later? In the public, about the Christmas thing?
Oh, you can do whatever you want. I don't know if it's a non-public thing or not. I think it is. Because it's, I think it's more than just a Christmas thing.
Okay. Are you prepared to talk to us or?
Yeah, I can talk about it.
Okay.
Making sure she had enough, maybe more of a little bit of a page down. So, you know, this past pay period has brought a couple of things up that are more policy issues, I think, regarding how we're paid overtime. So one of the guys finally took a little while off and went to spend time with his daughter. And, you know, you guys know my employees don't really take time off. So he finally took time off, and then we had that first Saturday snowstorm. And when he came in, because he took time off at the beginning of that week, he didn't get paid overtime for coming in on that Saturday. And then tonight's gonna be a prime example. Uh, we all take, we usually lose personal days, so we all took personal days when it snows tonight and later this week. They're gonna have to work at two o'clock in the morning on overtime because of the way the overtime policy is written. My suggestion would be that we just make it, you work your eight-hour regular shift. Anything outside your regular shift is overtime, and that would eliminate the problems that we have.
Can I, Andy, you did some research?
I have not done a lot of research. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, this is how the state.
It's how the state did it, it's written in the state contract. So you, your regularly scheduled shift could be twelve PM, midnight to seven in the morning, or like the highway department, seven to three. So if you work before seven, it's overtime. You work after three, it's overtime, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday is all overtime. The one thing the state does, though, is November first to April first, they, and they don't include sick time in that. If you call out sick anytime other than outside of the winter season, you have to work your hours until you make up to forty. They won't give you overtime. So they do that, obviously, because we don't, winter, they need as many people on deck as they can.
I think it's fairly straightforward for me to pull the state policy. Um, I, I guess the only concern I have is, you know, I can understand doing it for plowing and, uh, late night situations. I think you, you could get into difficulty if you adopted it as a, as a townwide policy, but maybe that's something, I know the board has been concerned about discriminating and picking and choosing and that sort of thing.
It, it wouldn't work for us. I'm fine with it. Steve, I agree with him a hundred percent. So we work ten-hour shifts.
So it wouldn't work.
So it wouldn't work.
And twenty-four, so, so it would have to just be a highway department.
I don't think you should.
Oh, you mean you think it would be friendly?
Well, I think if, if police and fire were definitely out of it, that, you know, is a big touch in your agency. You might want to consider it across the board.
Is it currently that if you, oh, sorry. If you work, sorry, if you work ten hours one day, if you work six hours the next, is that what you're saying? And this way now it would be, you'd get paid overtime for those hours?
Yeah, it, it, basically, it takes your overtime to a, a daily basis as opposed to a forty-hour weekly basis. So it, it, like, this evening Denise, here, she has, you know, done her eight hours during the day in the town offices. And however long she's sitting here would be overtime.
And if I have to leave sick on Friday, that would interfere with tonight working overtime? If we didn't?
Right, so it's based on the eight-hour cutoff as opposed to the forty-hour, whatever hour.
I think the question would be, as we're going through these budgets, because the cost is, at what point? Like, that sounds like that could become very expensive very quickly because so many people do work long days. On the other hand, I have incredibly feeling for people that are out there. I, I think that, I think we have to figure out how to make that work.
That's why you put it, you write it as a regularly scheduled.
Yeah.
Keep them in?
Something I was trying a couple of months ago was, because we had the discussion about the guys on the twenty-four-hour shifts and then the rotation of how that all works out, is doing anything outside the regular scheduled hours would be overtime. But, yeah, I'm on board with Chief Ronfield. We can do it because twenty-four hours, I fully support him.
Thank you.
So maybe we can ask the town administrator to work with Steve and anybody else?
Yeah, I can certainly pull the state policy and start with that.
And also in terms of if you include the scope, because once you take out the fire and the police, there's not too, too many left, so.
And you would be able to do like a dry run of the last month and then see if you start?
I don't know.
I think that's what we were doing, right? Was we were taking, not working as many hours later to make up for that or?
I don't think you'll see much of a change because his guys don't take time off.
Right.
Yeah, you won't, for us, you won't see it.
It's rarely gonna happen with them. And I don't either, I usually work full week, so I don't think you're gonna see a drastic change.
No, for us, it's just in the situations where.
Just wanted to predict, yeah, when you get that situation.
Like this most recent situation, these guys worked hard over the Christmas holiday. They had personal days to burn before the end of the year. So by taking their personal day, uh, on Monday, they lost overtime hours.
And when we looked at it, we were looking at what days we could take, and it looked like it was gonna snow Tuesday or Thursday, Wednesday and a Thursday. So we said, oh, it's like Monday's the only day we can take it. Now it's gonna snow tonight, so it didn't really work out too well for us.
Is there anything we can do that, uh, right now? No.
Send them food.
I heard some very nice people did that, and that was very thoughtful and I.
There was one other thing that I, I guess happened, and I didn't know about it until Scott had emailed me, but one of the part-timers that plowed for us that storm worked all Christmas at fifteen dollars an hour.
Oh, my gosh.
And that's.
So like the highway guys all got there overtime, the full timers. But the one part timer we had come in was working for fifteen or sixteen dollars an hour, I think, something like that.
So you don't have holiday pay or anything like that? So they don't get holiday?
And this one is like part, part. Only comes in when we need them, or need the person in a truck to plow snow.
So we got a person and a truck. Oh, you get a person and a truck.
The person was in the truck.
That was incredibly generous of them.
So maybe, maybe, I'm just thinking, the town should do something for her besides what she, she does.
Yeah, I just don't know why, because I hadn't even thought of it. She didn't say anything to me, she just, she emailed you.
Right.
Maybe you and the town administrator can talk about what possibly the town could do for her. Maybe we get a gift to, a gift to someplace or something.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that might be worth doing down the road is, when Randy was here, they used to give the bonus at the end of the winter to the part-timers that used to come in for all the storms. And it might be worthwhile to bring that back.
So why don't you two talk about what can possibly be done and bring it back to us? And maybe you can, since you have the email from that person, maybe you can just touch base with her and tell her that it's something.
I'll see her tonight.
Okay. So just, just let her go back.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Elseth, anything on the number seven?
I was gonna, are you going to, this is gonna affect them tonight?
I know, I'm wondering, are we sure we can't just, just think about it now? If we, if they're saying it's not gonna change anything, we could go.
We can just retro it back later, whenever we figure out what we're doing.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, I, I can pull the specific, I'll, I'll do that as quickly as I can, and we can use a retro active data.
As long as we can do that and make sure it's right, right in the phone.
All right, anything else under number seven? This latest unfinished business? Nope. So I moved into, excuse me.
I would recommend using A and C, not A and L, the C name as well.
No L's, huh?
No, there's no L's.
No L's today. All right, so I moved into a non-public session, number R S A ninety-one dash A colon three. Room number two, sections A and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? You will call about Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, yes, motion passes. She tried to capture you, all right.
I was gonna turn you in, Casper.
Very, very.
All right, so I moved to seal the minutes for the non-public session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Adjournment.
There you go.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.